Okay, I'll tell you. All right, so it is 7:30 Tuesday, October 10th, and I'm going to call this meeting, work session for the Board of Commissioners to water. Clerk Hostin, would you do a roll call?
Will do. President Franklin.
Here.
Commissioner Culver.
Here.
Commissioner Hansett.
Here.
Commissioner Lot.
Here.
Commissioner Penoir.
Present.
Public Works Director Darnall Bond.
Here.
Police Dean Dave Burst.
Here.
Town Clerk John Hostin here.
We can rise for the pledge of allegiance. Right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think we've been through a review of the agenda, I believe. So the agenda is behind us. So do you want to just read old business, new business?
Yes, will do. Under old business, I have A, ordinance 2023-10 property standards for discussion, B, annexation for discussion. And new business is A, shared parking agreement for discussion, and B, Marlboro Town Road for discussion.
Just to let you all know, we do not have new information from the attorney on property standards yet. So if you, if no one is going to have anything, there's no new information on property standards. So if, I'll entertain a motion to table if people want to table that. But we can, I don't know, if there's any changes or, we can still discuss it.
Has he approved it?
He's still working on it.
Then we have to table it.
Right, so, okay, so everyone, so we have to turn it into motion? Or can we just change it?
You motion it to table it.
Right, so.
You're going to table the item.
Is there a motion to table ordinance 2023-10 property standards until we have a draft back from the attorney?
So.
Five seconds. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Culver.
Aye.
Commissioner Hansett.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Commissioner Penoir.
Aye.
Motion presented.
Thank you. All right, so are there any other changes to the agenda? Okay, so we will move forward with the agenda. We're actually going to turn it over to Jay Summerlot. Is he the only, or they the only?
He's here in the office.
Okay. So they are going to have the floor to announce certified candidates. And Jay, we were talking about something earlier, and John will explain, we'll put you on the spot for that. So go ahead, go ahead with the certification, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and good evening, everyone. We received nine packets and were able to certify all nine of the packets. And so the nine candidates who will be running to fill the five seats are Derek Brooks, Patty Callicott, Charles Colbert, Sarah Franklin, Thomas Hansett, Joe Horclay, Karen Lot, Linda Penoir, and Alma Pravat.
Thank you, Alma Pravat. She was here, was everyone here when she came in?
She was here.
Alma.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to let Clerk Hostin explain the question.
So Jay, the question is, what can candidates do and not do with regards to town, like business cards, things of that sort, photographs that have been purchased by the town? And you probably know that that's excluded because, of course, that the town purchased those items.
Yes. Yeah, that's, that's a good question. I may have to do a little bit of research. I think in general, in order to keep everything on a level playing field, in general, no town purchase resources should be utilized in campaigning. I think if there are specific questions about whether a thing can or cannot be used, reach out to me, and if I can't give you an answer off the top of my head, I will research it and get it back to you.
Thank you.
Can you use my previous?
So, I, I just want to say, Jay, you can also use the town attorney as a resource if you have questions. One question did come up about headshots, and I sent that question to the town attorney, and that's how this conversation came up.
Gotcha.
He said essentially what you said. And I can forward you his response, too.
Yeah, that would, that would be great. It's nice to know that we were aligned in our recommendations.
But if you need to consult the town attorney, just let Clerk Hostin know, and he'll do that for you.
And we do want to announce on behalf of the Board of Supervisors of Elections, the candidate forum is being moderated by the Legal Women Voters of French Georgia County. They have all of your information, so they'll be reaching out to you to get you to sign the agreements that go with that. They are handling all of the candidate forums this time and the next. That event will take place at 7 o'clock here at Town Hall. It will run an hour and a half. Of the evening.
Good day.
It's a Thursday, October 19th. 7 o'clock here at Town Hall.
And that will be coming to our personal email.
It's going to be coming to your personal.
Our town email.
It does not come to town.
Not, right, okay.
It's all separate.
Right.
And then just to make you all aware, of course, Election Day is November 7th, Tuesday, open at 8 o'clock until 7 o'clock.
And I, I've mentioned this all of the, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, John.
Go ahead.
I, I was just going to say that I had mentioned this to all of the candidates already when I called them this afternoon, but just as a reminder that the candidate statements and non-town-funded headshots should be emailed to me by 5:00 PM tomorrow. I think I've shared my email address with everybody, but if you need it again, feel free to reach out to me. Easiest way to get ahold of me is by phone. And in case anybody needs, it's 301-775-8206.
Wait, wait. Sorry.
Sorry.
Do you want, this is being recorded, and will be posted on the town website. So I was trying to, only if you're comfortable putting your phone out.
I am, I am totally.
Out on recording.
Yeah, as the, as the Chair of the Board of Supervisors of Elections, I actually had a conversation with somebody earlier today. I am more than happy to make myself available to answer questions from anybody related to election business. I know, like the commission, like the commissioners, I am all for transparent government, so I'm more than happy to have my telephone out there for that purpose.
Okay, I'll let you say it again. I just wanted you to be informed before.
Yeah, no, I appreciate, I appreciate that.
Thank you. All right, well, thank you for your hard work on this, and we really appreciate you and the rest of the Board of Supervisors of Elections and our election judges.
Absolutely, I second that completely. Thanks very much.
Okay, have a good night, and we will move on to business. So we're going to just get right into annexation. I've left this on here. We do not have any new agreements, but I anticipate a new agreement to be ready before the next town meeting. So we'll have a closed session, discuss it, vote on it. Potentially three agreements. So that's the update there. Any questions? And we will move on to new business. Both of these are draft agreements for us to discuss. So the first one is a shared parking agreement. To give an overview on this, the board has put forward the idea of going to private parking lots and saying, let's, let's have the town manage the parking on this private parking lot. We can do cost sharing, and then this will help to free up more parking, and it will help to reduce the, as Jay, Jason from Center City says this, like unfriendliness of, no, you can't park here, we're going to tow you. And so we were approached by Trinity Episcopal Church to do a shared parking agreement, so we felt this was a good place to start and get the kinks worked out before we go to the businesses downtown. So this was drafted by the town administrator before he left. It has been to the attorney. I don't know if this is the marked up version from the attorney. And in addition to that, you have an email from Reverend Antochi, did I say that right? From Reverend Peter. Reverend Peter, from Trinity Church with his comments on that for us to review. So I guess the question is, what are our comments? What are our thoughts on the Reverend's comments so that we can hand this over to him and have the comments from their attorney?
So is this basically, you may have already said this in the introduction, is this saying that the town will be taking over the ownership of the parking lot?
I didn't actually draft it, but I do not believe it's like we're taking it, because the owner is still the church. The town, if you look on page three, it's like what the town's going to do. So the town's going to maintain parking fees, signage, the revenue share, advertising, parking rates, how payments get made, ordinances, enforcement, court requests, parking enforcement, and any junked or abandoned vehicles.
So what's the reason that they will not be taken over?
I think it's that they are looking for a source of revenue, and if they, if we charge for parking on their parking lot, then they can get revenue. They, they can't do their own parking enforcement.
So will we put the meters, the meters on them, or how are we doing it?
I think the plan was always to use Park Mobile for this and not to actually have, yeah, I think to use the kiosk in Church Street. I'm looking at Chief, because we had this conversation with Kyle. Do you remember? I'm trying to remember what Kyle's intent was. That's why I'm asking you. I'm thinking you don't remember either, because it was a while back. But I think that, I remember reading in here that it said something about Park Mobile. The town sets the parking rate and is the primary contact for Park Mobile. So we're not going to put a meter head in their parking lot. And in fact, they would just use the Church Street. Would they use the Church Street?
How far away was it?
They would have their own zone, but they might use the Church Street kiosk rather than putting additional. But that's really a more detailed question. We wouldn't put any kiosk or any equipment on their property. So number 11 shows that they are responsible for the maintenance of the parking lots and the snow removal. So it's really just to be.
They want us to be their manager.
They, they want to be able to make revenue, right, and.
Basically want us to manage.
Manage the parking.
The church needs revenue, and you need parking space.
Well, and we get revenue out of it, it's, yeah.
It's a kind of split. The church people get revenue, and the town needs more parking. And this is just one.
I don't have any exceptions to that. It's pretty straightforward. We have the, if we have a town event, we just have, keep all the money if we have a town event. If they have a funeral or something like that, they, they want to have, you know, 100% use of it with, they said something about vouchers.
I should actually, I'm just going to hand this to you earlier today.
They have all the, yes.
So, yeah, so they're sort of saying when, and this may be an issue that we have to work out.
It says it right here, number eight, that we'll get all the money from regular daily and event, special events, parking for the town for public abuse, so.
Well, we're charging and collecting and retaining it, but we're paying it out to them, too. Like, we're collecting it, but we're making quarterly payment to them. So they don't have to do any of the collecting. This is, so the comments over here are kind of. More, more we have to work out, yes.
Maybe I missed something. This is the parking lot for the church.
For the church.
Their church.
Yes.
Parking lot. We're taking private revenue.
Right.
To manage it, so we get all the revenue.
Are you on page four of the packet? We talked about the.
We would, we would collect the revenue.
Yeah.
60-40 split.
Yeah, I saw that, it's on page three, this 40-60 split, property owner.
And this kind of took so long to work out because we had to go through the attorney about, like, they're a church, right? They're, we're a government.
Yes, so they're part of.
So.
We based this off of one that was done in College Park.
Yes, we based it off one done in College Park. Oh, sorry.
College Park.
So.
So I have one question.
Yes.
Because I didn't, I didn't read it. So if we were to cite anybody, where does that money go?
So, let's see. Parking payment revenue is split. It says something about citations here. It doesn't actually say in here. No, the town will entirely maintain all parking citation fees, administration and related issues. So citations.
Number four.
But if that's subject to the 60-40 split as well.
The 60-40 split is pay, parking payment revenue.
Right.
So when someone pays the meter, that's the 60-40. But the citation goes with the town. And the reason that I think Chief is asking this is when you do the citation, there are higher costs to the town, especially if the sighting officer or Vicki has to go to court, right? So that's why.
I, I understand that, and I agree with that, but I think the.
Needs to be more clear.
The language could be a little, could be interpreted.
Okay.
And then would they be, if this is passed, this would be automatically subject to the rates of fee we've already established in our, under our parking order?
Yes.
And the snow and.
No.
What do they do?
They have to.
They're responsible for.
They have to.
No, no.
Okay. Main damage.
They get 60%.
So, I've seen under number four, J and K, that the town is the only parking enforcement entity during regular parking hours. And, under "and" here. Is it "and towing services"? Something missing?
So the town is enforcing during regular parking hours. But if there's a junked or abandoned vehicle and they, it's like on the weekend, right? Say it's Sunday, we don't enforce, have parking on Sunday. They come in for church, and there's a junked abandoned vehicle in there. They want it towed on Sunday, that they're going to have to do that, I think, is what that's saying.
Right, but what is?
Not clear.
So.
I can.
I'm not saying it's not clear. What I'm saying is, it says during regular parking hours. Is it our parking hours or is it their parking hours?
Yes.
Does our parking hours go to 10 p.m.?
So during, during the town's regular parking hours.
But then, but then there's another.
Then.
Right, so I'm saying, I'll be enforcing 10 o'clock on church properties. So for example, if it is 10 p.m., we're not doing it until the vehicle is there overnight and they're causing a problem, then that's attached. So until 7:00 AM the next morning.
Right.
But if they tow it, we have nothing to do with that.
Right.
Think that needs to be a little clearer, because I would say during the town's parking hours.
Yes.
Because it says the town will be only, the town will be the only parking enforcement entity during regular parking hours. But who determines that? Because it's technically the private property, and they could say, well, we don't want people parking here. It's like, wait a minute, you can't say that, because the town hours are.
Right.
From 7:00 to 10:00.
But we have in here, under all this responsibility on page two or page three, or whatever you like. Property owner will keep the parking lot open Monday to Friday from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
So probably Kyle drafted this.
And that's why.
Yes.
Because we're, I know I was talking with Reverend Peter, and he said, well, we don't have any problems that there's choir practice in the evening, but because we only have to go to the fifth o'clock after 5:00 o'clock it's free. So we need to make that.
So we, we could have set a separate parking rules or hours for the church's lot, but we would have to provide signage to that.
That would also be an adjustment in Park Mobile and would have to be an adjustment for the kiosk.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying, it kind of has to stay consistent, because the kiosk is not going to change automatically.
You're right.
From the car off at 10:00, whereas this is saying 6:00.
Actually, I think it is 6:00.
If you have a, if you have a different zone number just for the Church Street lot, you should be able to set those hours with the zone number, right? So at 6:00 o'clock, you wouldn't be getting charged at that point, even though the other, the rest of the town goes to 10:00.
But the kiosk isn't Park Mobile.
Yeah, kiosk, no, it's, you pay with a credit card, I believe, in coins.
The kiosk isn't.
Or it's Park Mobile.
Park Mobile.
Ah, okay.
But I think actually, sorry, but I think this is actually correct, because surface parking lots are free after 6:00.
It's right in the beginning, whereas.
Yes.
Second, whereas.
I was, I was doubting Kyle, but I should not have. It's because it's a surface parking lot.
But I was just, honestly, I did not read this stuff, I'm asking questions.
No, you're right, and I was thrown off. So.
And just an administrative note, we need to take those as pride officers, because we have no meters on those. And we did.
As long as Kevin.
Well, we were, yeah, kind of a whole. But it shouldn't.
So right here, when she said that, the town also maintains downtown parking lot. I think America, because the local district is a plus, like for monthly parking, six with credit cards and quarters are accepted with a parking rate of 50 cents an hour and for a maximum of 10 hours, parking passes are available for $40 per month. So, no, for the, French Georgia County also maintains meters at the 400 parking lot on 1st Street.
Thank you, Claire. This is Owen, she's got it, it's the church, Owen, and not us, because we don't tow for junk or abandoned vehicles on private parking, even though they're. Church.
Right, okay.
Is responsible for the town.
We only know of one occasion where we thought we had an abandoned car, and it turned out to be Reverend Deborah's daughter. Should think we didn't tow it.
With regard to the three statements that came in over email, I think they're more sort of technical to work out whether, you know, we can. I, I'm not sure, there's like a parking pass for day. We've talked about this with the bank, too, like how we would handle employees. So I think this is sort of more of a whatever works administratively, we're mostly okay with, as long as their employees aren't getting tickets when they're at work. Yes, okay, so we'll figure that out administratively.
Just out of curiosity, how many slots are there?
The, I want to say 60. Like, I'm not sure. It's over 60.
Okay, and then how many church staff, and is it the bank that also parking there?
No, no, sorry, the bank is the whole side, no.
No, the church staff, for the most part, like Trinity's people, we have two churches on that campus, and our people are generally three to four cars, and they're there in the morning, and then they're gone. Christway Cathedral, they come and go during the day. They, their problem is more in the evening, because they have choir practice, they have a lot more things going on in the evening. So you're not looking at a lot of parking spaces.
And honestly, it's not a lot of revenue either, right? Church Street lot, I only see it full during events, and we don't charge for parking during events, so.
This is, this is more for looking at the future.
Looking at the future, and it allows us to work through things in, you know, a back and forth. So, you know, with regard to the funerals and events, I think we, we currently handle this kind of thing informally already. The church will contact us and say, can we use the Church Street lot for X, Y, Z? As long as we have a paper trail, we say, yes, you may. Or if there's a conflict, we have to let them know. So I think that works. Chief is nodding, so. And then the last point is, is a point, but not, not part of this agreement. That would be something we would discuss when we get back to the Church Street lot. So everyone's good with that?
Yes.
Any other points we want to flesh out or clarify? Darnall Bond, do you have any concerns from a public works perspective?
Not at this time, Mayor. The main thing that I was worried about was the, was who maintains the signage, snow removal, and as I read further through it, I found all of that. Our involvement is really very limited, so I'm not seeing any issues on our end.
Okay. All right, so if you guys have any other comments after today, if you can get them to me by the end of the week, so I can work with the attorney on this and then get it back over to the church, and they can work with their attorney. So next piece is Marlboro Town Road, and this is an initial draft as well. I, we've been talking about this for a while. Is, is this the one that, did this come back from Kevin? I can't remember.
Yes.
Okay.
The one where you asked me to.
Okay. So.
Now I'll copy what I did.
Right. And you'll see that the, you know, I didn't stick in meats and bounces. At the, at the moment, so that we can focus. So it's just basically taking the, we talked about this, taking the driving portion of the road in Marlboro Town, not the parking portion, but the driving.
This is the town house facility?
Yeah.
Something we talked about in the very beginning, trying to do, how we're going to do this with the.
This hasn't had comments from Marlboro Town yet, so they're wanting us to, and it's based on taking a county, I think taking over a county road.
So basically, what are we doing? We're going to be cleaning it? We will be.
They will be paving, plowing, it's a paving, plowing. Darnall Bond, what else needs to be done? You removed the snow there. You removed the snow there already.
Not for the side streets.
Sorry, I'm gonna be fine.
Only for the main, uh, the main drag through Marlboro Town as of right now. But, um, pretty much we would be taking over plowing, salting, um, anything that falls in the roadway, um, cleaning the roadway, litter patrol, things of that nature, patching potholes. Pretty much the, things of those nature, natures. Also, after it is paved, we would also have to take over, especially with it being a residential, seal coating it every so often. So that would be another, um, pretty much, uh, cost. But that would elongate the, the pavement once it is paved.
And there's, the, the snow removal is gonna require some discussion, because in a large, now you're, you're plowing that main drag.
And they can't get out, and that was one of her, her issues.
Right. You're, you're plowing the main drag, you're gonna plow, if you plow the side streets, you can't plow...
People can't get out.
Well, yeah, people, it's, we'll have to work out the, we may have to put details of snow removal in here after we talk with them. Because essentially, if you park, if you're parked and there's a big snow and our trucks come through, you've got a big pile of snow behind.
That was one of their complaints, the HOA complaint last year, that they couldn't get out of the parking spot when the plows came around.
Right.
They sound like, they sound like, could give them like a fourth, they couldn't, you know, they, they barricaded in.
So, and I don't know that there's a real solution to that from, from a plowing perspective.
Not necessarily. That is, that is definitely gonna be an issue, um, pretty much anywhere you go, especially in a residential. We don't have the ability to, um, well, our plows will not allow us to take everything. The only way we could prevent that would be to go back in with the skid steer and the track loader, um, to actually clean it up really good. The, the trucks are not able to get close enough unless we took everything from, uh, the parking lot side of the street and on the side where there's sidewalks, pushed it that way. But then that creates another issue.
Right. So, so it won't necessarily resolve that issue because in a big storm, you're not gonna be able to get those skid steers out until everything's cleared everywhere. But I think that's something that they'll wanna discuss, so...
Yes, definitely.
But I, I wanted, they, I made sure they were okay with us talking about it before they had seen it. So, any other kind of comments from us before it goes to them?
If we take over the road, does that give you or give Keith any jurisdiction in there as far as parking or violations?
Not unless they're parking on the road, right? Yeah.
That's what I, I think might be a concern. I mean, you don't have to figure it out. If you, so say somebody's parking somebody else's space.
Yeah, that's still...
I don't know.
Yeah.
If they're parked in the middle of the street, then we can do that. But if they're in one of those spaces, even if they're double parked or parked, that's the HOA.
If there's no parking on the street anywhere, right?
Don't talk about on the side streets, the side streets.
Side streets, yeah, there's no parking, yeah, there's no way to park on the side street. So, in, in order to take the parking, right, we would essentially be enforcing, like it's a, it's a whole nother level of thing.
I just wanted to verify that we weren't going to do that. Not that we should do that.
And they don't want us to.
Have they ever been?
So...
Well, that should probably be spelled out in the sentence here, shouldn't it?
Should be very clear.
Because I don't wanna new residents to come in and think that, well, the town is responsible. Association is responsible for all parking spaces, main roads, in the main thoroughfares, into those parking spaces. But if, on that main drag, if folks will park improperly, however improperly is defined?
He said it's HOA.
Well, I'm talking about on the main street where there aren't parking spaces. Because in here, it says that we have curb to curb, including carload parking spaces. So if anyone parks inappropriately along that main street into Marlboro Town, you won't...
Right now, that's ours.
It's currently, it's just a main artery street that this is gonna kind of create a little hiccup for. The running force on the main, but not on the street, then that's their part, you know, the space is like this, if somebody's parked, blocking somebody in. So like a delivery is double parked, blocking two cars, but they're delivering down to the other end, then they'll come back and...
I know the HOA wanted to help them for a long time, so I guess, and they've been paying taxes, so I don't see why we shouldn't help them, because they're paying taxes all the time.
I mean, that's fair.
Huh?
I mean, you pay taxes.
So this is gonna be meat and bounces, what's wrong?
No, these are, these are side roads.
That's what we're taking.
If we already have a main road.
So I will, you know, add these things and we will work with them. Well, this, we gotta go back and forth, so I think the one with Trinity is closer, like better chance we'll be able to vote on that at the end of the month than this one, because there's more parties. But I will take, okay. So, I think we're good?
Yeah.
I, I will, you know, it's, there's time, if you wanna give a comment, you can give a comment. I think we only have one resident, is there another resident here?
Yeah, there's two on the podium now.
I spelled something wrong? Oh, Grove, you're right, Grove. Thank you. She's like, I know, right? All right, um, are there any administrative items? Oh, is it, is it? Yeah, if a resident is online and wants to comment, they can raise their hand while we spin the administrative item. So, do you move it? We'll, we'll take their comment at any point. Do we have, um, gentlemen, do we have anything, basically? Yeah, we can do that. Let's make sure, Darnell, did you have anything administrative?
Not at this time, ma'am.
And she said no, so, um, go ahead, you wanna announce the...
No, I'll let you.
Oh.
Before Trump or Tree, um, I forgot the exact date, but...
October 21st. October 21st.
Yep.
The market starts at twelve?
I'll have it in front of me, but, um, look out for the constant contact and we'll be getting all the final information out this week.
And then Trump or Tree.
Everybody's in there. It's more like, it's a...
I feel like it's 5:30 here.
Yeah, we wanted to bring the town, bring it a little earlier or let them go right into, yeah.
Okay, I have a question. We're closing Main Street all day?
So we are trying not to close Main Street because of our limited resources. So we are working on an alternate location that is also downtown.
That's what I read on Facebook today was...
I had to remove Facebook posts. There was a question of information, information got, either didn't get communicated or got communicated wrong. So I've removed that Facebook post.
Okay, because that's what I read today and I'm like, closing it all day? I wanna be, I'm a white cam.
We, we are, we are without our town administrator. We are changing the time that we're previous and a mistake got made, but I have removed it. So I apologize for that.
We brought it back, that's what we gotta do.
So, uh, it's no longer there. That was, you saw me jump up earlier, that was what I was doing. Is there anything we missed?
Uh, I was just gonna say, just a reminder, election, you know, election day, uh, Tuesday, November 7th. I'll close it open at 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM, right here at Town Hall. I'm out and voted.
Okay. So we just have preliminary approval up next.
When, uh, is it inappropriate that someone can put our signs up?
We'll have Director Bond and, and Clark Hooken are gonna have to get together on that and provide that information.
Thank you.
So next meeting, um, agenda, I just put all the same things on here. Um, they're aspirational, sorry. Hopefully we'll have some, some of the stuff will be ready to vote on. If not, we will, we changes to the agreement in that time period. It is possible, we will also have an annexation agreement. Is everyone okay with that?
Sure.
Okay. All right, uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm willing to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
No, no, yes.
All right.
President Franklin?
Aye.
Mr. Bulwark?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanks?
Aye.
Commissioner Law?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.